Oh Mayor and the rest of the council members if you're here. My ex-husband Larry Taylor passed away on Sunday. I don't know if the rest of y'all heard it or not.
No, I know that Connie, I'm sorry. Unexpected.
Well, he was sick. It was all, yeah, it was sort of unexpected because nobody thought he was that sick. So. The funeral is gonna be Thursday.
Okay, thank you for sharing that, I'm sorry.
That funeral great sight.
I understand, times when I did.
Yeah.
So the council here. Great.
Uh with them, we're all here.
We'll call to order tonight's committee of the whole from May 5th, 2020. The council should have the minutes from the April 21st committee of the whole meeting, the additions or corrections. If not, do I have a move for approval? Have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are carried. Next item on our agenda is the moratorium extension for private dormitories and academic detached dwelling units. We discussed this Friday during our packet meeting. The moratorium began on February the 27th and is scheduled to end on May 27th. Obviously, the night we set the moratorium, the second meeting in February, we discussed would 90 days be long enough, the staff felt like it would, that they already had a head start on many of the ideas and thoughts that they would be bringing forth to the planning commission and/or the city council. A couple of weeks later, this pandemic has hit and we've not had an opportunity to vet those ideas, those concepts, those thoughts, not only within ourselves, but obviously the planning commission has not been able to meet and have work sessions and our public, most importantly, is not available to participate and be a part of those discussions. With that being said, it's my recommendation to the council that we extend this moratorium another 90 days, which would basically take us through the summer. To do that, you would have to approve that here tonight and then Jim would put that on our agenda for May the 19th for us to consider at that meeting, correct Jim?
Correct.
Okay, Jim, do you have anything to add to what I just said?
No, just a correction, it was February 18th.
February 18th, alright. February 18th, thank you Jim. I can tell you guys from the council level that the staff is, has a lot of these concepts put together already. They're certainly prepared to begin discussions on many of these ideas. I think they're ready and they would have been ready and I have all the confidence in the world that we would have gotten started on this in this 90 day window of time. If we get some liberties to go back and have regular meetings and can include the public, you know, Jim and I will give you our word that we'll work through this as quickly as possible and if the 90 days is not needed and we can end the moratorium sooner, then we'll end the moratorium sooner. It just depends on the procedures and how these processes go through. Some of these ideas are ideas that have to go to planning first. Couple of them would come straight to the city council. Okay, alright, thoughts or questions in the council?
What would be the new extended date? If we did, it's another that 90 days, is that, would that be August the 27th?
August 25th.
The 25th.
Yep. Anyone else?
Would it be out of line to ask for some sort of update on, on at least a thought process on the various options staff is considering? I know you, you want to continue to, to vet those out internally and then, you know, with the planning commission and, and and the public, but could we get a progress report of some sort? You know, just as we approach the, the end of our original 90 days? Would that be out of line?
No, we could do that. Are you, you mean right now or did you mean at the next meeting?
No, no, just sometime in the near future.
Yeah, we can do that.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll do this in a motion format since we're not together here. If you're in favor of the staff preparing a resolution for us to extend the moratorium for another 90 days at the May 19th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll see that at our next meeting, thank y'all. Questions on the agenda for Mr. Buston? Any questions? On tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, is there a move to adjourn?
There are moves.
Alright, we are adjourned for our public that is, and I believe we do have a couple of attendees. But all, we cannot start this next meeting until 7 o'clock, so we've got about five more minutes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Brett?
Yes sir.
You want to give us an update on your family?
Uh, we are, we're doing well, we're getting monitored. Doesn't look like we'll be having a baby tonight, but the fine staff here at AMAC have been fantastic. Food has been fantastic. Doing well though. Moms, mom's doing well.
This might be our first ever council meeting from within a hospital room.
I believe so, that's probably record breaking.
You'd be the one to do that Brett.
They are, they are, they're ever the professionals here, we've, every bit of safety has been taken and they're doing a fantastic job here, couldn't be in a safer place.
Good. Your wife okay?
Okay, so I walked away Brett, you in the hospital or what's going on there?
Uh, we, we, we thought we may be having a baby today.
Oh, you finna have another baby?
Oh, it's a little early.
Okay, well congratulations.
Thank you ma'am, thank you very much.
Brett, is there anything we can do for you?
Uh, just keep praying for us, keep pray for my wife and, and our, and our little baby that's gonna be here soon and and the staff here, they take good care of us.
You got it.
You got a boy or a girl?
I got another girl.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm quite outnumbered at my household.
Welcome everybody to the Auburn City Council meeting for May the 5th, 2020. Lindsay with the roll call?
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Rizwan?
Here.
Ovi?
Here.
Carson?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Sanders?
Here. Tonight during the committee hall, we talked about the student housing moratorium. The 90 day period of time would be ending this month. And the fact that the council and the public, with the public's support and help, along with the planning commission, does not have an opportunity really during this whole time to discuss some of the ideas, thoughts, new strategies that could be brought forward to evaluate student housing moving, moving ahead. So we asked the, I asked the city council if they would please extend the moratorium another 90 days. And everybody agreed to put that as a resol, have that resolution ordering that at our next council meeting, which will be on May the 19th, so we'll have that on our next council meeting for May the 19th and that'll be another 90 day extension that'll take us to the end. Under announcements tonight, just a couple of things and I do have a statement I'd like to read. First of all, I want to remind our community to continue to remind our community about the census. Once again, I appreciate the fact we're all distracted right now, but the census takes about 10 minutes to fill out and it's so very important, we've, we've discussed many times about how important that is to our state as well as our community. So please take time to fill out the census. I want to thank Colleen Jennings for replanning our baskets in downtown Auburn. I saw her last week in front of city hall, working on the two baskets there. She actually had James with her helping and she just does a wonderful job and they add a lot to our downtown and I appreciate her doing that. Speaking of plants, the Dream Day Foundation led by Ms. Marion Sankey sent us a note yesterday that she's put together a, a program that for about 100 homes in the Auburn area, they're gonna go and help decorate front porches. And so they can provide, they're gonna provide a hanging fern and a couple of potted plants. And so for $40, you can sponsor someone's home or porch in the Auburn area. So I'd encourage you, if you're interested, please go to the Dream Day Foundation and find this information, $40 and you could help make somebody's day a little bit happier and make their front porch a little bit brighter. But we certainly appreciate what they're doing. Last Friday night, I was on a fundraiser livestream with former Auburn football player CJ Uzama and former Auburn football player Matt Van Gorder. They put this together and had a number of people come on and their, their point was to raise money that they want to give back to our community, to the community that they no longer live in, but that they played football in and spent their college days in. I'm proud to tell you that I believe that they've, I think they've collected over $5,000 and they intend to give that to the hospital in some form of support. But these are two young men that love their community that they played football in and wanted to give back and I just appreciate what they're doing. I want to take a little time and just talk about where we are right now with the pandemic and what's going on with that and, and a lot of these are personal views of mine, but I just wanted to share them with the community and with the council tonight because we don't have a lot of time to be together now, as we talked about last time. You know, it's interesting when you look at this March and last March. Last March, we had a terrible tragedy that happened in our county. 23 people lost their lives. This March, we had the beginning of a health crisis, whereas today, our county has lost 28 citizens. Seven of those are from Auburn. During the tornado, we stopped what we were doing and we brought all of our resources to the good people and Smiths and Board Guard to try to help them and many of those people still need help today. With the virus, what we were asked to do is not use any of our resources, but to go home and basically stay with inside of our house and hopefully that this would curb the spread of the virus. And now that it's been over 50 days and as we're approaching two months, we're starting to see other repercussions of this as we're starting to see our trend lines go down. And interestingly enough, the hospital sent this to me just this afternoon and for six straight days, the number of infections have gone down. So that's a great sign for East Alabama Medical Center and that's coming from the hospital. Last week, the governor opened the door for some of our businesses to be open. She opened the door for our retailers to be open with half capacity and she opened the door for some other people to get back to living a normal life. What she did not open the door for are businesses like restaurants, our personal services businesses like salons or nail, people who do nails or barber shops or massage therapists, folks in those industries. Certainly people that are in the exercise and fitness industry, she did not open up their, their businesses. And she extended a order to May the 15th. I want to let our community know that as being a part of the Big Ten mayors, the Big Ten mayor sent the governor a letter on the day of her announcement, asking her to reconsider restaurants and barber shops and salons. And it was our concern that these people are the folks who have a lot at risk, they're suffering the most right now, their resources are the most limited and we asked for a plan to get them back open with accountability. None of us were ever asking for anything to be done recklessly without safety being a concern. But we did send that letter to the governor on Tuesday. I have personally had multiple phone calls with members of her staff and exchanged, exchanged multiple communications with members of her staff. Today, it's obvious to me that many of our small businesses and small restaurants in our community need to be open. And it's my sense that where Auburn is, is a community, when you look at the trend lines on the infections and what we're seeing in our town, I believe that the time is now for Auburns to have the rest of our businesses be open. Folks are suffering, they're not being able to work, these businesses are not, businesses are not being able to open and have their employees come back to work. And it's my belief that with safety and accountability and restrictions and certainly hygiene as proper practice, that I trust our community to go back to work and do the right thing. We are a free country, nobody has to go out and go to a restaurant if they don't want to. They don't have to go to a business if they don't feel safe, everybody has a prerogative to do that. But the ones that want to be open, that feel the need to be open, I believe it's time for those people to be open. I can tell you that I believe that there are discussions going on in Montgomery as we speak and considerations are being made to relieve some of these restrictions that we are living under right now. So we'll see where that goes, the governor is certainly strong willed and she is listening to her task force that she's put together and she has not been swayed easily through any of this. But it's my belief that Auburn is ready to be open and Auburn is ready to continue to do business. With that being said, some of this affects our city and I do want to read a statement tonight related to the city and our resources. Our finances at the city of Auburn rely mostly on sales tax and occupational license fees, which means our two major sources of income will be among those most heavily hit. Business license fees and residential rental licenses are based on gross receipts, which will obviously be affected. All of this impacts the revenue available for public safety, city schools, parks and rec, streets, street resurfacing and repair in any of our city services. Our city manager and his staff are taking a hard look at our budget for the remainder of fiscal 2020. That includes reprioritizing of capital projects, evaluation of budgeted one-time expenditures and constant review of departmental budgets. They're reviewing reports of layoffs in industrial companies to determine the impact on revenue. But more importantly, they're also working to aid those that are laid off through our workforce action center and workforce development division. City staff is doing a deep analysis of our major sources of revenue. For example, they are evaluating sales tax receipts by various categories of business and projecting revenues by month and by year to help realistically formulate our next budget. We will get past this, we'll again be talking about how well Auburn is doing economically and as a community, but we have to be realistic about the road we're traveling between here and there. The city of Auburn will do its best to continue to responsibly prioritize the use of tax dollars for the best of our community because we're all in this together as residents, workers, small business owners and as the Auburn family. Okay, alright, does anybody else in the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight?
I just, I just got one question Ron. The Dream Day, kick over that Dream Day Foundation and how to get in contact with those people to make a donation.
Sure, yeah, so for the council, I believe I forwarded this email to you guys that had an attachment on there. It's called the Dream Day Foundation Planning Together. I do not see, well, here's a phone number, it's a 663-6638. 663-6638, area code 334.
Okay.
Dream Day Foundation. Alright.
Thank you.
Ron, I don't have an announcement, but I did have a question. You mentioned the, the 10 mayors, the 10 mayor meeting.
Yeah.
Y'all sent a letter, did all 10 of y'all sign that?
We did.
Just a, a select few of y'all?
No, all 10 signed it.
So all, all 10 tend to agree with, with this opening? Or what, what you just?
The letter at that time on the 28th Stephen was, was asking to give a timeline for restaurants and the personal services, salons, barber shops to be open. Those were the two criteria, two areas that we asked the governor to give us a timeline. We felt like those were the most critical to get open at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi Ron, this is Kelly.
Thank you.
Based on your statements, is there any interest in, in Auburn unilaterally reopening some of these businesses? Head of the mayor's, or excuse me, the governor's proclamations?
We don't have the authority to do that, is that correct Jim? We don't have the authority to do that and my comments tonight, certainly if I conveyed that Kelly, I apologize, that was not my intent. But we, the governor has to do that, these are her orders and she has to allow those openings.
Yeah, I noticed there was one county in Alabama that they have said they're not going to enforce that any longer. That's why I didn't know if we were so far down the road that we were willing to take that risk or not, but doesn't sound like we are.
I, I wouldn't suggest that I feel like that's the right
Okay.
tactic for Auburn to take right now. That was done as a county as well and certainly we've got other partners in our county that would have to go along with something like that, but.
Right.
Uh, Mayor, will we receive a comprehensive kind of report or analysis of revenue shortfalls and how that'll affect capital improvement projects in the future?
I'm gonna let Jim answer that, I would just tell you that, you know, the disappointing thing is through March, we were doing really well as a city, we were ahead of projections and people, I was very pleased where we were as a community, you guys were getting there, I don't know if we've gotten all those reports yet, but we were tracking very well. Jim, I'll let you finish to answer that question.
Yes.
That's good, that's good.
We, we continually track our revenues and our expenditures and as soon as we get the April revenues in, we'll have a better data for our model to, that will let us decide how we might end up at the end of the year. We also are waiting to hear from the university where we anticipate that classes will come back to campus in the fall, which also is a very big revenue generator for us having, you know, again, almost half of our population gone is, is is a problem, as the mayor said, we were tracking very well through March even. Even though half of March, we were in lockdown, our revenues for March still were, were very strong. We don't anticipate that for April and once we get those numbers, we'll see.
Well, we have to shift around some of our projects that we were planning, looking to the future, I mean, how is that looking at this point, do we know?
We are optimistic that we'll, we'll continue to be able to do some projects however we are. Staff is looking at all projects, looking at all budget items, we are being very cautious right now until we can get those numbers in and get that model populated.
Thank you sir.
Any other announcements in the council? Okay, this time we'll move on for citizens' communications on agenda items. If you have anything to ask the council or talk to the council about, about tonight's agenda, please just tell us your name and address. And we do not have any takers to that, so we'll move into city manager's communications, Mr. Buston.
So under city manager's communication this evening, we have the announcement of one vacancy on the waterworks board. This is a six-year term, which will begin June 22nd, 2020 and end June 21st, 2026. The appointment will be made at the June 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. The next item of business on the consent agenda is, or the next item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead Jay.
I did just a point of order, I don't, 6D, I'd like to abstain, so I don't know if that needs to be pulled out so that I can abstain.
What'd you say again Jay, say that one more time, 6?
6D.
D. Okay. Alright, Kelly?
Uh, yes, I'd like to discuss item 6C, 6 Charlie.
Okay.
Also just had a question going back one, on the communication from Jim, the board announcement. Is there a incumbent that's gonna be, or we know that yet?
Uh, there is an incumbent who has served one full term and one partial term and it's my understanding that he wishes, he is going to apply and wishes to be reappointed.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anyone else like to remove an item from the agenda, it's considered agenda? Okay, Mr. Buston? 6C.
So item 6C is the contract with Mark Foster Company, it's an assessment center for the promotional process in our fire division.
May for approval?
Second.
Have a motion of second, any questions?
Uh, yes, I have some questions. Okay, um, I guess I'm, I don't know the, the background between all of, all the fire division requirements, but it seems like we have a, of course, we have a city manager, an assistant city manager, a public safety director, an assistant public safety director, a fire chief and an entire HR department. And as you just mentioned, we need to take a look very carefully at all the funds we're, we're expending at this time. With all that expertise in the city, I'm curious as to why it is we need to spend 18,000 plus expenses of roughly 20,000 for someone else to do this HR task for us?
That is because we are under a court order, in 1991, we were sued by some members of the fire division. The court at that time, there was a consent decree that requires us whenever we're doing promotions in the fire division to do that through an assessment center.
Okay, that would have been great information to have, alright, that's all.
I, I mentioned that in our packet meeting.
Oh, okay, alright. Thank you.
Jim, I have a question, how, how long are we bound by that court order? Indefinitely?
I think it's indefinitely, I think that our HR director is on the, yeah, Christian Reader is on, Christian, do you know how long we're bound by that? Reader is on. Kristen, do you know how long we're bound by that consent decree?
Yes, we're bound by the consent decree until we go back to court to ask for it to
It costs more than eighteen thousand dollars.
Is there an intent for us to do that at some point in time? Go back to court and ask the court to be lifted?
We have no, no intent at this point. The, the process that has been put in place seems to be working very well for us. It seems to be fair. It seems to be what the court has, has asked us to do. We have had little, when it has been challenged, the court has upheld that, that this is exactly what they want us to do and we have not decided to go back and get it removed at this time.
Okay. So we're going to continue to pay eighteen or twenty thousand dollars every time, every, is this an annual thing or periodic or how often do we?
This is, it's not very often, Kristen. Do you, you remember when the last time was that we, that we had the, the consent decree come up?
That we performed an assessment center?
Yes, yes.
So in my seven years here, this is the third one that we've done. So it's not something that we do routinely by any means.
Okay. So we've, we've spent almost sixty thousand dollars or intended with this if we approve this. And we do not have an intent to challenge that expenditure in the future. We have a tremendous HR staff and expertise now. So we have to do it this time. Is, is that kind of summing up?
We, we do have to do it, yes.
So Jim, if the council, if a council person wanted to ask us to go back to court and pay legal fees in order to have this heard again and determine if we can relinquish these responsibilities, could that person do that?
They could, however, that'd be a little bit out of order since it's not the council's decision. It's mine. Now, what the council can do is not appropriate the money for it. You have that authority. So you could say at budget time, you're not going to appropriate any more money for that and then force us to go to court and spend the money litigating.
Mr. Buston, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Buston, this is Paul, registered. Just a couple of things to mention on this assessment center. These are routinely done in public safety, not just by fire and police. Part of the reason is that you bring in other persons to be on the panel. We have reciprocal agreements with other agencies. We send people to other assessment centers. They send them to ours and that is a measure of fairness in doing that. This particular assessment center would be good for one year and so we would not have to re-incur this cost if later down the road, we're able to bring station six online for the fire division. This would take care of handling all of those promotional processes as well and would not, you know, cause a recurring cost for additional process.
Jim, is it, is it, is it fair to say that this is, this was sort of a court order from nineteen ninety-one and it's not as simple as us just going to the court and saying we don't want to be under this anymore. It requires a legal position and a change and we have to ask for an amended order. I mean, there's, there's several steps to just saying, hey, we don't want to be under this decree anymore. Is that fair?
It is fair. That's correct.
And so we can't just, if there'd be some legal ground or something in the law that we have to request relief from that order. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We got a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item six D is the lease agreement, terminating the lease agreement with Auburn Bank for the downtown employee parking lot.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any questions? I know we have one abstention. Really somewhere, we separated this. Any questions? All right. Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those are all the items we took off the agenda.
All right. I need a motion for the balance of the consent, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item seven A one is the approval of the working capital loan into subsidy program for Auburn Bank. A public hearing is required.
Do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with voting on this this evening? Hearing none. This time we'll open the public hearing. That's right. Excuse me. I apologize. Lindsay, would you please call a roll? Unanimous consent?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Friswell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Of course.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address city council on this, please give your name and address for the record. Is there any participants on the public hearing? All right. Seeing none. Are there any questions from the council? Comments?
Well, I would just like to say that I think I've had one of the candidates or one of these applicants rather, reach out and express their sincere thanks to this council for this program. And it's a business that's not allowed to open until the governor decides that close contact services are allowable. So I think this program is necessary and I appreciate that this council is moving forward with providing somewhat of a vehicle for individuals to at least not have to worry about the interest side of things. But again, this just goes back to the fact that the sooner we can get Auburn back up and running, the, the better for all of our companies.
Anyone else? All right. Do I have a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Lindsay with roll call?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Friswell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
I'll abstain.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. Item seven A two is the approval of the working capital loan interest subsidy program for River Bank and Trust. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none. Lindsay?
Dixon?
Yes.
Friswell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address city council, please give your name and address for the record. And seeing no one for the public hearing, we'll move forward. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Lindsay with roll call?
Dixon?
Yes.
Friswell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda of the city.
Do I have a move to adjourn?
Well, before we adjourn, as we mentioned in the committee, the whole, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here at EMAC right now. We thought we were going to have a baby today. We may still. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank everybody that's over here that have been doing so much, our healthcare professionals. It's, it's, it's phenomenal the efforts they're putting in. And I, you know, I know this may be out of order. We may need to talk about it at the next meeting, but I would love to see our council draft a resolution. I don't know, proclaiming a day or doing something to show our support for the amount of efforts that EMAC has put in for our community.
Well, you're exactly right, Brett. You're getting to see it firsthand.
Oh, yeah.
I'm actually going to be out there Friday participating in a, in a small event with a number of people, but they have been fantastic. They've been heroes. They've stood in the gap on behalf of our whole community, receiving all of these people who are either sick or potentially sick and operate their business in a different way. I certainly agree with what you're saying. Mr. Buston, if we wanted to draft a resolution on behalf of the council, thanking our hospital workers and our responders out there, could that be something we could do for the next meeting? However, we need, we need to do that. Could be the whole, could the council just decide right now?
We could just put one on.
Okay. If the council's agreeable to that, we'll have a resolution at the May nineteenth meeting, thanking our hospital employees and staff for what they're doing. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Nobody saying no? If you, if you have, if you'd like to talk to me about it, why don't you give me a call later, send me an email. I will presume that we're, we're good to go on that. Thank you, Brett. Anyone else?
Are we going to have citizen communications on non-agenda items? It's, it's not on the agenda for tonight.
We don't have that.
We do not have that. We've not had it in the last two meetings.
No.
All right. Anyone? All right. Is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.